Take the back.
All right, the calls, leaving order. You stand for the question.
Karen.
Yeah. Joe, you care.
Okay, so we're gonna pause for a minute.
Please talk quietly with yourselves and our coaches.
That one is for her.
Fire please. Anybody like privilege to the floor?
Um, Devon Williams with the Fairhaven Planning Board, and I wanted to speak to the issue of the zoning commission. And I don't know if this is the right time to do that, but I'd like a chance to say something about that maybe when you're talking about it, or if you want me to do that now.
Now would be the time, I guess.
Well, I understand that there's, there's some conversation about the zoning commission and maybe we don't need it anymore. And speaking as a planning board, Fairhaven Planning Board, that I kind of know, you know, behind the scenes, how much work your zoning commission does and how much. I wish Fairhaven had one too, and I'm always telling the village board, you know, I wish we had a zoning commission because the zoning commission, you know, worked on the water issue last year, but mostly what they do is work on lots and lots of small issues in the zoning code. That things that need to be tweaked and fixed and improved and, and, and they've done this for years. And without a zoning commission in Fairhaven, the planning board has to do all that, which we don't really have time to do. And we don't have the ability to do that, plus what we do as a planning board. So I see the zoning commission as providing an amazing invaluable service to the planning board and to your, your, your town board. And I think a lot of people don't realize how much work they do. And how many little things they are constantly working on that make a big difference. But just changing the wording of something, it, it, it takes a whole process to do that. So I just wanted to speak to what I really believe is the value of the zoning commission. And in fact, I always refer to the three ladies on the zoning commission as the three angels. They're the angels to the town, and that's how badly we are. And unfortunate sterling is to have the zoning commission. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm Chris Harris, I'm on new hiring after the town of Sterling. And when I got hired, I got appointed as a union steward for the town. It's been a lot of discussion in regards to the health insurance that we currently have through the town. And I'd really like to, is the town to consider going with the union insurance to save across the board all the way for the town of Sterling and the employees. As you guys know, everything goes up here every year. And with that being said, the insurance that the employees would be getting and the retirees is going up 10.80% next year. And every year that goes up, from what I understand, our health savings account doesn't get as much contributed every year. So the way the town is going right now and the way the employees and the retirees are, insurance is going up, the town's contributing less. So we're, and the deductible, the deductible is quite high from what I gather. And what I hear from the employees, when they go for eye care, it's easier for them to pay out of pocket because of the deductibles and insurance. So I have round numbers here on the paper from the union. And what they would be supplying the town. You guys would like to look at them, or if you want me to read them. I don't know if you guys want me to do it.
We've got copies of them. We had copies of it, yeah.
And just around the numbers, I'll just give it to you real quick here. Right now, you guys are contributing for a single person for the HSA account is 1640, 50 a year. And the insurance is 72416 a year that you guys do during monthly. So you guys were to consider the union insurance. Understood, the single person is roughly 780 or 980 dollars. You guys wouldn't have to contribute to the health savings account anymore because the deductibles would only be a $25 cold pay instead of a $2,500 deductible that you'd have to get up to. And would that also be, as said, the union has their insurance rates for three years after the end of July. So I have the paperwork right here for 2025 and 2024. Like I said, round numbers is 980 dollars a month. And in 2025, for the same coverage and everything through the union, it's going to go up to 1,001 dollar. So it's probably 25 dollars every year. It wouldn't be the astronomical of 10.8, 10.80%. So I'd like you guys to consider stepping forward and moving forward with going to the union insurance and.
You guys have looked it over and you think. Yeah, I mean, I, I'd liked it over initially when I was talking with Sean, we were debating him, but it was close enough to the end of the year that we'd already made the commitment with, with what you had. But I thought, you know, just from glancing it over, it looked a lot, like a lot better deal.
It's a lot better deal, yes, and I think it's a better coverage.
Yeah. And that was my concern is I didn't.
And this is a three-year lock-in, basically.
Yes, every year, three years of that.
For budgeting purposes, you're going to know three years in advance. So if it went, you know, if it goes up 10% this year, at 700, that's, that's 75 bucks there, the union on a 25. So you know what I mean?
Yeah. And that's covered, that's your medical, your dental and your vision. It's all three covered, all combined.
Yep.
And you figured both sides of that.
Yeah.
But we're paying now what your new numbers are.
Yep, we just, we had it all together on the, the 72416. We had it all together.
You researched it all, or you know anything about, usually there's the, you can only change insurance at the end of the year or something.
So the, in, being, they call this, forgive the terminology wise, if you guys agree on it today, they would come down and do all the big work tomorrow or the next day to switch you over. Being a whole municipality and everybody's going, they can do it in the middle of a month or whatever.
Yeah, now when we talked to them before, they said that the other, other members of the town that currently get insurance, which I think will only be the town clerk, would she be offered the same?
Yes.
So she's.
And, and the retirees, if you guys have.
Yeah.
So they'd all be in here and just be in the non-marketing unit.
Correct.
Where we'd be marking the units.
Okay.
The retirees in the future?
Present, present and future.
Okay, still like Jimmy's and everybody's would get switched over, right? I'll get switched over to this.
They're just looking for numbers.
Yeah, the more numbers, the better rates they get.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, could I please get a copy of that?
Yep, whichever, whichever you like.
Whatever, watch, watch, whatever, yeah, whatever. I like to have information in front of me. I like, I'm a paperwork person.
I'll get it to you here tonight.
Okay, great, thank you.
As long as you guys have a copy machine.
Right, right, or if you can just, maybe Lisa could make a copy and put it in my box that you're convenient.
Okay.
So that way I have the most up to the grid information. Thanks, Chris.
Do you need an answer tonight, or can we table it and give everybody a chance to look it over and vote on it next month? That's not gonna.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Okay.
So I just brought it to you guys tonight. Unfortunately, I had to meet me on these, these terms if you had heard the time.
Good job, good job.
You're only allowed three minutes a person, so I was pretty gracious with the last one.
You just got into my camera.
Yeah, let's sprinkle it.
Yeah, that's out there.
Anybody else? Jay Sawyer.
Jay Sawyer, Fairhaven, New York. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board, there's going to be more and more activity over on West Bay Road. And they're going to be interested, there's a great chance they'll be interested in tying into the Stormsor district over on West Bay Road. There's new homes going up. And right now, there is no, there's nothing out there for, to go by. In other words, how do they connect? Is there a fee for that? Is there an application for that? Right now, you have nothing, so that needs to be looked at. Because the time you started today, it would be at least three to four months before you.
Before you got a lot of.
Right. Anyways, wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Look, there's gotta be a template out there, something.
Yep. You guys received my paperwork on that a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And at least someone would like it again and send it to you.
If you don't mind sending it to me.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't here a couple of years ago. Yeah, I sent a copy to Jonathan to, so he has that.
All right. Anybody else? When the department reports, Highway.
We finished our paving and chip ceiling there. We are going to perform, we have one more project in conjunction with Fairhaven, Interstore Road. That's going to be a true P. I just had to pull two days ago. Correct, yeah, Monday morning. Last Monday morning. Anyways, I guess they're on board with that. It's going to be through standard spell, it's going to be in place. All we have to provide is care control. And that is chipped off. It was in the 24 agreement, but we changed the treatment. Other than that, we've started going, you know, salt, going to barn. Started our second round mowing. And then the shore is on, well, they're on today, I mean, they're on. And then starting to ready to work. And then also.
Just a dirty word. I would like to thank you guys too for having the truck and the tractor and the parade and stuff that represented town also. That was nice, appreciate it.
And I would also like to thank the highway department. There were two signs that apparently had been knocked down somehow, the end of Marsh Road and no parking sign. And a stop sign at the end of Green Road, it looks like some vehicle must have just ran right through. And the highway department was contacted, and I'm sure within minutes, it was rectified, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. We good?
We good, we good.
Yeah.
The story?
I'll try to hurry for three minutes, but I'm busy.
You can take all the time you like.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, we started out with Dr. Bill DeWitt coming, and we took a trip around Sterling and Fairhaven. The state park where, where the presser was, North Fairhaven where the true cable was for the railroad. Over to brackets between where that station was, down Route 38 to see where the two railroads crossed, Route 38. And trying to discern which one was which, then down shortcut road and. I can't think of the road to come up to Sterling, that's the road to Sterling Station, so we, he could see where Diamond was, where the two railroads crossed. And then back where we could trace the railroad coming back into Fairhaven and the Fairhaven train station that was in North Fairhaven Depot. And I've heard from him several times, and I just wanted to show you that he's completed these two books. With information all about the Southern Central Railroad from Sayer, Pennsylvania to North Fairhaven. And that's just very detailed. I just want to read this a little bit for you. For example, Markville, mile post 382, the Dairy and Creamery. Same mile post, the station. Oh, yeah, I'll get you that. Sterling. Switch to the Ontario and St. Lawrence, which is later to New York Central. Later on, we have the tower, which is now next door, the semi-force signal at mile post 384. The station, mile post 384, mile post 384, the curvy toilet. Mile post 384 at the Y is the barn. Mile post 386, Dairy and Creamery. Mile post 386, this has been Fairhaven, the coal feed and wood store, which was Turner Brothers. And on and on, so every mile is covered in, is very thorough set of documents. Which he thanks Donald Sterling for saving all the records for, for the hundred years. So that was one thing. And then the next day, we had Corlins, McCanns, Longleys, Vincent, Crabbe. So that was one thing, and then the next day we had Corlins, McCanns, Longleys, Vincent, Crabb, Don't Work. And so on, various people here uh doing their genealogy, and I think they had a great time here. Then I uh worked on. For the Godfrey's, a grave in Markville. Which has a Civil War person maybe in it, but unfortunately, there's a gravestone in Markville and another one. In Gettysburg. So we don't know where the remains are, which one. Uh, then Kathy Conce was here to uh interested in the Brooks, Harris, Hills and various other families. Uh. Pat and I went to an H three C meeting and Lee too, where we're discussing the seventeen seventy-nine project. Which we'll hear about a lot more in the future, celebrating the. Two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the Revolutionary War. I worked on uh. For Josh Spencer and Waxino Reed and her family. Thursday, uh Friday night and Saturday night this week is our play. Uh, I may have left something out, but you get the idea, that's been busy.
That's nice, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right now we may be scheduling a trial. We might have a trial here at the town hall. In August. All people will be getting letters. I have to order to be.
Did you get to pick who they are? Thank goodness. Frank Perkins.
Yeah.
He's probably the one on trial.
Pretty close, I think.
I forgot about one thing when I gave that report. Kathy Conce found out that. Some of her ancestors were chicken and beans.
Also, see your list with the.
That's a tentative list so far. I plan to write a letter to the editor to see if I can get. Comments. And possibly a couple more names. I don't really know at this point, but I have. I may have mentioned that last month I called with Sudo County Nine Minutes. For an estimate, but I haven't heard enough in the.
Yeah, yeah. Sasma. Langmore.
Nothing new to report.
Okay. DVA?
Nothing new to report.
Oracle Society?
Well, we uh Sunday was our second meeting being open and uh we had a few people come through. Everything that has been required. We're working on uh everything for the booth and we're having a car show at the end of this month. Yeah. So last Sunday and.
Right, summer, thirtieth, thirty.
Yeah, uh. July.
Hey, committee reports, fire ambulance.
I'd like to.
And no, Stan's single.
Okay, no, and um. Dave, I got him this morning and fire department or the uh, yes, fire department's gonna stay the same as it was. Last year, they. Name it on it. Uh, the ambulance, he hasn't got back in the meeting, uh. I gotta follow Rockwell, but like, he said he had to talk to Dave minutes home. And so I'd be hurt, but the college morning, and then did follow that.
I would also like to fire under Jim the seal to get after, staying to get it done.
Okay, so is is it a one-year contract?
It's a two.
Two-year.
I believe it's a two-year contract, that's what we uh asked for.
For fire department?
For the fire department. It's gonna be the same numbers as it was last year.
For.
For all three kids.
Okay, what about two years, sure.
Well, I haven't talked about that.
Oh, okay, okay.
The ambulance will be a wonder.
Yeah. Ambulance will be one of them.
Now, they don't, would you say about Stan, is he? Uh, the power?
He's hard to control.
Very hard. He's, yes.
Go build him back or something, don't call him and then like six months later, I'm gonna.
If you're lucky.
Senior citizens.
What are we gonna, we're not, one minute now or?
Yeah, minute thirty.
Thanks a lot, Chris.
You're welcome, great, thank you.
And I promise. Okay, yeah, you guys got the report there that I sent to you on this, and it's pretty stoned, soul writing is pretty good. What we got going on right now this week, we got our our annual picnic. We're gonna try and have it at Church Street today in Fairhaven. Uh, the Cuba County Sheriffs are gonna be there, so you know, I'll be behaving myself. There's no problem with that, and uh. Let's see, uh, no, not next month, I'm sorry, we got uh, that's your attorney, she's gonna be there. Um, okay, and 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 Anta Nucci, I I'm close on that, she's gonna.
Brittany Gorm in a county.
And I don't know. See, no matter how I say it, it's gonna be wrong. I've got one word in this play that I can't, I can't say right, it's gonna be tough on that, so, but anyways. But so she's gonna be there on August third, so that's gonna be interesting, and uh. And everything is interesting. And uh, let's see, there's uh. Okay, yeah, we're gonna try to have it, it's a Brazilian, but if the weather is either in the nineties or thunder and lightning, we're worried that uh. Fire off to that picture, that they already know this, so. So, and that's about, yeah, unless, if there's something else, and I'll feel free to interrupt the meeting at any time. Uh, the Yankees are not playing until about nine thirty, tonight they're in California. Uh, they had a bad game yesterday, that's very sad, I. I drank two jennies afterward and took care of that. That's about.
A lot of jennies this year, isn't it?
A lot of them, oh, I tell you, it's been bad, it's been a bad year.
But not as bad as the Mets, okay?
Alright, okay, that's about baseball, they don't like to get too much red in the meetings. But I'd also like to thank the town board for what they do for the seniors, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do.
I know, but so the seniors, so. That's very important.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Water Districts? Got, we actually got a copy from Ian, um, Karen and I, Pat. Had a meeting with them this morning. Um. Kind of the timeline, we said, you know, a lot of this is up to regular authority. Agencies getting back to us and stuff, but.
I can go with the most.
You on it?
Was today's meeting instead of the one that was for what, July sixth or something like that? At the last meeting, I remember.
No, that was with USRV.
Okay.
Yeah, that was just a meeting with them, they just wanted to confirm.
Okay. We were doing things.
You have that, so um, like Ian kind of stated was that. Right now the contract for uh County Water Authority and. Uh, he just needs the anticipated hours uh per week for the routine maintenance, um, that's about. What is the last thing we're needed to continue this um timeline? He um. Also stated that he's been in contact with the time, he with the USDA, the Health Department and the. What was the other one, that's what I think it was, uh, F, F, F.
Yes.
Um. Uh, to let them know where we're at. Um, and he stated that the estimated agency approval time can take up to two months. After the bid, so uh, this was important because he wanted to make sure until we got into the ODU bids, because that's the important thing. And then once the bids are out, that will be when um. Depending on the money, whether or not we have to get a permissive or mandatory referendum. And then that is up to. We will leave the town and what would happen is. The permissive referendum um. Is thirty days and a mandatory one in one hundred and twenty, is that right? Um, so. If everything goes as planned here, and this is um. He said, give or take, this is about the average, um. Then the uh construction would start in April. And then the would last nine to twelve months. Um. But the referendum would add two to four months. Two of this, to the completion of the project. He also did say that there was five communities that they've been working with that had had to do referendums. So this is not unheard of for this time. And post COVID with all of the. Costs going up with labor and supplies.
What the referendum would be for is that you. Once we get the bids and open the bids, we're over our initial. Where our initial money was.
Our cap per week.
Yeah, um, we have received some other funding. But if that doesn't offset that enough, it's gonna raise the price for E D U. Then the referendum would be to. Go ahead with that, you have to have another referendum in order to increase the cost for E D U. At that time, but he said we won't know that until. The bids come back to see where we land as far as what we've been awarded, what we proposed initially. And what the new cost per E D U would do.
Would be, would it be up to the town board if it comes to that point to choose between having a permissive referendum?
Yeah.
Or mandatory?
Yes, sir.
Again, my understanding is a permissive referendum, the onus is upon the property owners. To initiate a petition. Which would be presented to the town, saying we want to have a vote on it. That's a permissive referendum versus a mandatory referendum. It's the town board that's saying, we're going to. Um, have an opportunity for you to vote.
Correct.
Okay.
Ian did recommend, I mean, from his standpoint, he did recommend a permissive referendum. If it came to that, because he said the percentage had passed that originally. Um, but he said that would be totally up to the board and he would. You know, we'd have to make that decision, look all the vectors, you know, the difference is a twenty-five dollars or is it a hundred dollars? Different things like that, so. He didn't say what the town people. Just had one of their costs were ninety dollars a year more for E D U.
Yes.
And he said that passed for a moment. Not a year.
Well, thanks for the written, uh.
I'm sorry, he got us this morning, he got us this morning, I was calling it everybody, he turned it forward.
Wasn't great.
Oh, that was your job, Karen.
Right, but I've been asking for it and I finally have a written report.
I have been asking for it as well, so um, he sent it to us right before a meeting with him.
Yeah.
And then he went over it. With those uh notes that I said I took. So I hope that helps in the reading and he said if there's any question. Um. To, um, and but it does, he didn't have reasons and, you know. Uh, explanations for the timeline, so.
Yeah, he said he used the average, but he said that, um. Since it was already. Submitted once and approved and um, him as well as us have been in contact with the funding agencies and stuff. He said it might go a little quicker because it's pressure under by himself. But he couldn't make any promises.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, zoning commission?
Okay, within last week, I forwarded electronically. The zoning commission meeting notes from June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, I asked Lisa. To make this um, six-page document. Part of the minutes. This, it's going to Donald, but at the June fourteenth meeting, the zoning commission has said, you know what, it was about two years ago. That Lisa Summers presented the zoning commission with the potential L U R amendments. Wouldn't it be a good idea to look at each of those and address the status? Sometimes it seems like we're spinning our wheels. Um, but so you can see that on page two, potential L U R amendments. With um, in bold, that actually responded to what transpired as a result of that. So I know it might be confusing, I'm pretty thorough when I do notes. Um. That, I mean, that's your discretion, you're the town clerk. But I'm just saying that when I do minutes, because it's a, we're, it's a document that we rely on, remember, what did we do last month? Or two weeks ago, um, anyway, so I presented the same document to the uh planning board, June sixth. And I did go through some of the um different items, but you had a chance to read it over. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, you can see that. The different requests for looking at potential. Changes to the L U R come from um CEO, attorney. A highway superintendent, planning board, zoning board of appeals, et cetera. Um, so it's not something that's just initiated by the zoning commission, does that make sense? And I know at the last meeting, Karen asked some of the details and I believe she said I went through it extensively. Um, but if you do have any questions about what we've been doing. And of course, I heard Deborah Rose make a comment on that, that uh. And how we function. And is a part of the looking at the L U R and proposed L U R amendments. Can I ask, um. June, the zoning commission, is there anything you would like to say? Also, you're the mayor of the planning board. About the zoning commission?
I think those minutes um really explain. Um, in in pretty good detail what we've. Accomplished and what we've been working on for the last. Two years, where, you know, we meet. Every two weeks, every three weeks or whatever. Um, for a couple hours, three hours, and um, we do our homework in between researching and. Um, trying to give documentation for some of it, so, um. You know, it's it's helpful to the planning board, um. The work that the zoning commission does, because there's no way the planning board has time to do. These changes, make these changes. Um, we discuss them, we always discuss it at our planning board meetings, but the zoning commission has. Um, been working on and we always try to get. Um, their take on things, and this is why a couple of those things, we've decided not to do anything about. Or to change because that was. What the rest of the planning board suggested, so, um. And the Z V A is also um, been helpful in in providing us with information to self.
And I believe you said, and you're a representative, um, in the quarterly with the Cuba County Planning.
Correct.
And I think you've mentioned more than once. Uh, what they are, their comments on.
Well, the zoning commission. When we re. Re-uh visited the land use regulations, what, in two thousand fourteen? Um, and. Provided them to Peter County, to their land committee. At the next. Planning, county planning board meeting. They uh commented. On our. Rewrite of the land use regulations and suggested that towns. Who's don't at the present time have. A zoning law or land use regulations, look at what we've done because. It was a pretty good example of what. What they could accomplish and they worked at it, so. Um, and the zoning commission, he's commented a couple of times that. That, you know, the town Sterling has a zoning commission and. Um, how helpful would be for other towns to consider it?
How much do you guys? I should know the answer to this, I think I do. You guys also. Other than looking at changing laws, do you make interpretations? To the planning board at all from? From what's there, or it's just? Looking at changing. Changing what's there.
Sometimes the the verbiage can be a little confusing, and you know, Scott, you've been with us. Um, so what we tried to do was. Clean up some of the verbiage in a couple places. Um, we spent a lot of time on the violations and then then said it to the attorney and he said, no, you can't. Um, we spent a lot of time on the violations and then, then it said it to the attorney and he said, no, you can't do that. That's, and, and it was a paragraph with one sentence. Um, and it was just so convoluted and confusing and we tried to. Make it better and we said, no, you can't do that, it's a staple, so. Um, but that's, that's what we've done with a, a number of things as we, we reverted things or. Um, come, come in with a new approach to it, just to make it easier. And I see the value in it, but I, my hope is that people who have to sit on this board after we're gone. Hopefully it'll make it easier for them, so. That's our role.
Okay. Workplace, nothing, part of oversight? Employee handbook?
Is there anything you see that we need to update in the employee handbook?
I can't really think of anything, but um.
Because my understanding is.
Clarification and. There's been some new holidays and stuff. Um, they're listed in the employee handbook, so I think maybe updates on those. Um, the insurance is gonna have to be spoken to because of. If we piggyback off of the highway and the union, um. I don't know what that would be, but I think that needs to be looked at. And clarified, so that it's.
So when that, that decision has been made, then that would be an appropriate time for the employee handbook committee, to me, I think.
Yeah, I think so, so yeah, but I think those are the only two things that really stood out.
Right, okay.
A lot of that, for the union, that kinda, the union supersedes. The employee handbook for the full-time M E Os, um. But we've still gotta take into consideration how that affects the rest of the people.
Right.
And kind of hold it to make sure that everything's covered that way.
Right.
Personnel, we had nothing. I get a motion to accept the minute.
Just one correction that I fixed. Uh, we had us found on the word, uh, house person on the last resolution and it wasn't numbered. I fixed it, but we had already printed them and I thought I'm not gonna waste a paper, so that is correct. I just wanted to bring that to her.
So yeah. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from the June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting with the zoning correction? No, it's not, it is, okay.
I'll make that one.
I'll say it. Okay.
Hi.
I get a motion to accept the supervisor's report in June twenty twenty-three?
I'll make that.
Oh, David?
Hi.
Hey, correspondence, we have agreements with water district three, with the county sewer authority. Zoning commission, I hope that. I don't have any more minutes. The speed on old state road was. That was denied, correct, and the state E O T speed limit on New Street was approved.
It's a good thing, there's, there's a lot of children there, to go down there to the basketball.
Yeah.
Books.
I can't believe it was never bicycle was all over, yeah, I'm glad that I got it. It was a younger area for me.
Anybody have anything to say for the agreement for twenty-three?
I was gonna bring that up, yeah, we'll bring that up. Okay, so old business, um. Have the big safety with the work flag and West Bay Road Storm sewers, which I spoke with Kevin Cox, spoke with Carl. Think it's better that we have all the different districts split up like, you know, Joan or Karen, somebody suggested. So, um, work with two county sewer and water to get the agreement on that. Water District Three discussions and agreements with Hugh County Water Sewer. Um, so a couple of questions we had, Carl, or that I've got, and we talked briefly about it. If you could reiterate what we spoke about as far as hourly maintenance you thought for a week or for a month?
Yeah, uh, you know, usually you take over a district, it takes you a month or two to get comfortable. So your first couple, two, three months might be a little more labor intensive. Um, and, and you're gonna have some maintenance you're gonna wanna do, sure to be comfortable. Make sure your valves all operate, make sure you can locate them easily. Make sure valve boxes are open and accessible, you know, if there is emergency, and then you're gonna want to point to hydrants. I don't know, uh, maybe Jay knows, or someone knows, if they've been done routinely or not, but you like to do it, so we work. And uh, so the first couple of months, you, you might see, you, you know, two days a month. And, and then, uh, but then after that, I had to tell Scott, I, I would really expect sixty-eight hours a month. It should drop off, you'll have routine stuff you do, check residuals, do your monthly reports, take your bacteria samples. Um, but, but unless there's a, you know, these systems, Mr. President knows the, I don't think it's been a lot of problems for you. And so I think you've got a good system, uh, there really isn't a lot of, uh, time going through the planning. Uh, but as a rule, once you kinda get, get things up to speed and get comfortable and, and uh, learn your way around and, and you get a little bit more uh. Efficient in your work, it's basically just basic routine, so flushing, check residuals, do your reports, take your bacteria samples. So just more routine work, you know, you'll have, you know, you'll, twice a year, you'll wanna push hydrants, check hydrants, you know, I don't, uh. There's two kinds of thoughts on, on hydrant maintenance, whether you wanna weed it or nuke them to keep the weeds down. So that's a discussion to have, you know, but, uh, but really, I don't, I don't see it, uh, I don't see it being a high labor or a high time district. Uh, you know, we, we just come over, we've had in town of Clement for a little over a year. You got three, four layers of house on West Lake Road, that's time consuming. Because when you're looking for something down there, you find everything, including the past ten houses that got built there. But this is being more rural, should be a little bit more efficient.
Um, the residual testing, how often is that? So I know now the village comes over once a day, I believe, and tests like the. Highway garage and stuff, is that?
During the week, yeah.
During the week?
Yeah, and that's, that's something we could work out, you know, uh, truthfully, we may, we may use our, uh, to punctuate here and carry, but he's right here. There's no sense in a guy driving up the log ride, ten, fifteen minutes worth of work.
Okay. Um, in the contract. It says, whereas the assistance will include the authority's employees. They have direct supervision of town water district employees, we don't have any water district employees, so.
I, I, you know, something.
Is that just verbiage?
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, you, we all know what happens when you have to learn to do something.
Yeah.
Right, you know, mom, mom will come out in a heartbeat, right? So, you know, the, these things are all things that he, uh, our attorney likes to write, but they're not essential because they don't exist.
Right, so if we don't have a water district employee, you can't supervise it, okay? We're not gonna assume that anybody else is.
No, and truthfully, you know, um, we, we don't, we don't, we really don't work that formally. Everybody kinda pitches in.
Yeah. Covers it for my questions.
Hi, Alan, did you know, did you share the contact information with me?
No, I haven't, I, we need to get, Ian from C two A E would like your email address and stuff, and I don't think I have it. I think we've always communicated by phone or text.
Yeah, that's no problem.
If we can get that, and um, this would be more for water district two. When we get that other contract drawn up is when he needs to hourly, you know, just wanna average, because he needs that to submit. To the funding agencies and for the plan and everything, and what it's gonna cost to run this thing, so.
Yeah, yeah, he's trying to build the yearly costs.
Yeah, yeah, so if you can get us that, I'll, um, before you leave, whether you wanna text it to me or whatever, so I can. Share it with everybody, um, so we got your ears and whoever else down there, if I don't, you do all the paperwork or whatever. Whoever, whoever we need to have for contacts down there.
Um, I'd like to know if anything is gonna fall on our department as far as the water does. So the reason I ask is we have four men to take care of eighty-eight miles of road in the first. We are pretty thin as it is.
Yeah, I don't, you foresee where you'd have to.
Support you need, is what I mean.
No, no, actually, we're pretty self-efficient, but the only thing we might look for is a little stone in emergency. Nothing, nothing extraordinary.
That's, that's fine, I just, I don't, uh, if we're in a blizzard.
No, that's understood, that's understood, but, but I, I will say this much, the hiring department, department guys are a free buddy bless it. They're, they see everything, they're on the roads, they're going inside the roads, if they're in the wet spot, they're usually gonna find it first. You know, that's, you know, so, that's, you just look for that kind of, that's the difference.
Right.
As far as manpower, no, I understand.
But that's, I mean.
But water pipes never break in the winter, is it?
No, no, that's right. More mother work.
I just had a question on, yeah, I think it's second two. Rights and obligations of the town, the town shall have the following rights and obligations pursuant to this agreement. So, says, A, the town shall remain responsible for all billing and collection of town customers. And payment to the town's wholesale water supplier. And for the debt service for the water districts. So is, anybody got a sign there?
Actually, that, 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 that's something Scott and I have probably talked about, if he wants to do water meeting. Water meeting, water meter readings and billing, we'd gladly cook. Uh, that, that's all, we're getting it as comfortable, and I know you're having it done now and I haven't really heard anything place about that, so.
Um, Gemma Seals said that they'll continue billing until we can, I don't know, but I think we need to, you know, dive into, Pat Crane was looking a bit, little bit into the cost of. Getting the software, whatever, we would need to do it ourselves, or. Yeah, when we get that, we could compare that to the cost that.
Yeah, I, I, you know.
Who folks would do?
It's, it's ironic, because everyone uses Williamson software.
Yeah.
Right, Williamson digs, digs every town, two, three thousand dollars a year for software updates. And if it's, if, if it's counting, not the water authority, but the county per se, if there was ever an opportunity to save a lot of money. That would be it, because with today, where everything's done with computers, you know, billing is automatically sent and bill is printed automatically. And I, I preach this all the time, it's just crazy that we're all paying Williamson four, five thousand dollars a year.
If there's a shared service, that'd be a good time of the year. For that program?
Mine is a thousand dollars.
Is, is it a thousand dollars for your, for your town first program?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then.
I have two programs.
Yeah, I, I just know, I, I listened to the other town, there's like two thousand dollars for.
This is yours.
Seven hundred, yeah. It's your, yeah, so we can look into it and see, compare the costs.
Yeah.
So it's your own, so.
Yeah, yeah, so just curious to, you know, the water district three, if some of that work is gonna fall back on the town. And not be handled by the village like it currently is for the other water districts.
You know, I, I read that, and that felt, so the town has a responsibility, but they could delegate that with a guy.
Yeah, whether we do it ourselves or make something else to do.
For heavy water before we do it for you. I think the reason you put that in there is you worried about the capital debt?
Definitely.
You know, I, I think that's what you're alluding to, the, the capital debt, you know, the money you borrow to put the system in.
Right, but it also says here to maintain records necessary or advisable to the operation of the water district. Again, that consumes somebody, somebody's time. And it states the town is obligated to do that, so I just wanted to clarify that. So we got down to someone walking in in the morning and having this new stack of work to do. How the next one will work well.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think the records, I think you're alluding to more of the financial operations or bonds.
That's, yeah, that's gonna be our responsibility for the, you know, side deep of it, I think.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. One task to do with a relationship with the Quidah County Water and Sewer Authority. And Sawyer Associates LLC. I'm reading the first page where the resolution, whereas. The town has requested assistance and supervising and management of operations and maintenance and repair on them. Of the water districts by the use of the authority's employees, Sawyer Associate LLC. Just wanna clarify, is Sawyer Associates LLC an employee or a subcontractor?
Subcontractor, it probably should have been a company.
Oh, well, it's something now, because it makes it look like that. Because on page three, it does say if authority employees or Sawyer associates are needed. So it, it does, so I just wanted to make sure I understood the difference. Okay, and the other question, um, exhibit A, page A, field labor rates, normal work hours, sixty-five dollars an hour. Is that like per person, I think, what if you have two people, is it sixty-five dollars a person?
Yes.
So double it?
Yes.
Okay, what's the norm on that? As far as how many people you would have in the field doing these?
Good, they only manage if you're one person.
Okay.
If there's a break, it might deter you.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, one sentence almost been authorities, employees, and Sawyer associates.
There's a missing something.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, I think my.
Any other questions? We've been having difficulty with doing this, I mean, I don't mind blocking, but it's been factored out everything.
That's where it's going.
I want to thank the water district committee.
One is, I, I.
Deep tracker. Like if we're gonna be building and stuff.
I don't, we don't have a problem. I know that we, the state control, I want someone to open to, if my office is billing.
Yeah.
And collecting, somebody else has to get it, but what I'm saying is there's other things in here that. My office just doesn't have the manpower, but it is.
Right, a lot of that would be, um.
Are you gonna have a, you know, we put the cart before the horse on this. You know.
That's what I was alluding to, when I asked that.
Yeah, I, I just. Don't know.
Not very clear.
I mean, I'm clearly, I'm just gonna, it's gonna have to be processed and who's gonna do that?
Supervisor?
I would think there's probably supervisor, I understand. Because a lot of it's gonna be the standard, a lot of it's gonna be the standard paperwork that we're doing now. Which is the debt payment, the paperwork where you have to, how many gallons of water did you sell, how many did you use? All that, so that's already handled by the supervisor's office, as far as all that. You know, the supervisor, the supervisor would, you know, the board would appoint someone to be for oversight, you're in damage. I think it'd be the water district, like, for the, um.
And there's also the idea that right now, being that the village of Fairheeman is, is doing, would be doing it until we have time away. I think one of the reasons being that this needs to go through is because of the whole timeline with Fairheeman. Um, and then we can figure it out. Um, but the billing, like, look, there hasn't, uh, you're needing more hours.
And no, no, and I'm working with the building, but you have to have somebody to oversee it.
Right.
And it can't be anybody in my office.
Right.
It's gotta be like an outside eyes looking at it and saying, you know.
And that might be something we could talk to Carl about, if they have somebody that does this all the time, to come in and just do an audit. And actually, annually or every other year, do an annual audit to see.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have so many houses and we also use a CPA firm to review that.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's, once you do the format setup, it's pretty basic.
But the other paperwork with it, the supervisor's gonna do it. You're saying?
Yeah. He's smiling.
The other thing is, you know, like, the date.
Yeah, we would have to change it. So I would. But, you know. We go to vote on a resolution, I would change this date. August first and then change that one. Uh, whereas it ends with, uh, authorities, employees and change that to and Sawyer Associates. Mr. Clarification, I may have.
One of those would terminate from very, um.
I thought it was August. Yeah.
It's August.
August fourth, yeah.
Did this go from August fourth to?
We could change it to August fourth if you want or if you're willing to take over.
They've already done that for our shop, won't you mind?
Yeah, I would think, yeah. Um, they're not, I don't think the village is gonna be upset if we. Was stated in that thing, Gemma Seals made it very, that he's gonna do whatever. It takes to make a smooth transition. So we. Turn it earlier, ask him a little bit of words, he's fine with that. Okay? We good on that one? Also, we're good. Cause the important part of this is water district two. Would be the same terms and everything on that. There just would be a little more time involved because of the water power. Such as that. Old State Road, um, they responded, I don't think it's appropriate at this time.
When would they say that? We haven't had a death yet.
I mean, I've talked to people coming in with kayaks coming. Look, well, I'll say they've almost been hit by a car. Several times, the way they came down to their.
Think they also understand that it's more of an enforcement issue than it is a speed limit issue that. They're not gonna be able to come out and monitor. Now, plus the people that are going sixty-five now.
Well, years ago, they were gonna change the intersection on my end of the road. The engineer basically told me that there hasn't been an. Oh, yeah.
I, I don't know, and I, I think Dan Sutter being briefly looked into it, I don't know what he found, but. There's also the question of putting stop signs. Like Sterling Center Road and McNeely Road. Putting in like four-way stops, but I don't, I mean, it's just.
Doesn't act as Congress.
Yeah.
While they work.
Yeah, well, I didn't know if that would help alleviate some of the problems or.
It gives them plenty of time to speed up.
They'll just go eighty between.
Sometimes they go by June's daughter's house, she has horses walking down the road. Whoa, I mean, I, I remember well behaved horses, I can tell you that.
That's kind of how many times you get past the other bridge.
Yeah, they're just flat by there.
And then I'll snow, wing down, we get past.
Yeah, my permission to win. But it's insane, I. Think people come out of the city to enjoy the festivals and stuff we have in here. And they just kind of like totally ignore the rules, hey?
I, and I'll say this, and I said the same thing when we were having all the issues over on West Bay Road. I think if you started writing the speeding tickets on here, I bet you ninety percent of the speeding tickets we wrote would be for people that lived in Fairhaven. Or on West State Road. Unfortunately, this has been, I don't think a lot of us. I think some of it's out of counters, but in September. It's your local people. It's, the vast majority of people who live in Fairhaven, work in Oswego and Novellas or like that. And I think you'll find that if you follow them, most of them will pass Fairhaven.
Most of the speeding tickets are in our home.
I want to warn most of us.
As I showed you.
Right there.
Yep.
Yeah, once you get them established, people get the word around.
They need to find a good, there's not really a good spot on Old State Road for them to back in and hide. Let's use the private driveway.
Charlie's driveway, look. I mean, they can't stop the trucks, you've been in the bar for a week, so.
Yeah.
I felt like it gets.
I, yeah, I don't think, I don't know what the liability is, I think there's some, like a, like a residential.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, turtle code trial scheduled for April twenty-sixth has been postponed. It will be July twenty-sixth at six P M. Our grant money, still. Wait to see, hopefully, we can use that to help alleviate some of our.
Water district.
We received a moving contract in forty-nine. Uh, we got the one-year contract for dogs, um, that expires in five months. Is there anybody that would have the time or the whine to try to track down? Dog catcher? Or?
How about when you're at a associate darkness?
We, we spoke, yeah.
Supervisors and.
We don't have another, yeah, we don't have another one of them until. September, cause they take the summer off.
Right.
Had the last one that was discussed. The light, um. Some of the towns that use. Other services weren't really willing to share. Who they use in fear that.
They lose them.
In fear that they would lose them, um. My thought is, like, the town hires that one. So I think maybe go on the town hires website, I haven't done it yet, but look and see. Who they're using, um, a lot of the towns down south, Summer Hill. Um, Fleming, you know, specifically down, but down that way, they use a service at Cortland. I think Cortland would be quite a ways to come up here, but I don't know. They got a few of them.
We're not looking into Oswego or.
That's, well, exactly, yeah.
See, a town will, yes, they used to be Gary.
We could ask who does the town wolf, if we could ask who does.
Gary Metta, he used to do it. Even down in, let's see, a dog has my barn and they have free chickens.
Right. My dog wouldn't do that. But see what happened though is now it's a lot more regulated. You go pick a dog up. Has to have the air conditioning, payment TV. I did, it's kind of like when you're incarcerated, you get more rights than you do on the outside. Um, I did speak with a gentleman over on. Acre Road, he has a dog kennel. And I asked him about it, if it'd be anything he was interested in, and he said, no. The kennels and. Dog boards don't go hand in hand because you can't bring a dog into the kennel that has a head of shots. And all that verified, if you pick a dog up, you don't know that. So that makes sense that you wouldn't wanna bring. A sick dog in and have it in the vicinity of all the dogs. So. That's something we can look into, we can get it for the last minute. Right, we did, it was talking about when you go down with the supervisors meeting and. Ones that have, are happy, were kind of.
Right.
Kind of chested with it.
Right.
Everybody else is strong.
I know back in the year, well, it was before two thousand, but we actually had our own employee. And it didn't take long for us to realize, yep, you have to provide a heated kennel, et cetera, et cetera. It would have cost more, it would, it would have several hours long, so it was before nineteen ninety-six.
Yeah.
Because it was when I started, we got, right, you guys have getting rid of.
I don't even remember.
Anyway, yeah, so that doesn't mean we should discount that, but at the time, I can remember Bill Crane was on the town board. He, he just couldn't believe that what had to be provided. And that was, as Lisa said, umpteen years ago, so I'm sure it's. Like you said, cable TV.
Yeah.
Three huts and a cow, cable TV.
Um. Pretty more qualifications. Looks great, I'd like to see there's that many. People in town. Great honor. Discussions on zoning commission committee. I think in listening to a lot of things, I think it does. My thoughts, I don't know, everybody else can share their thoughts. I think it does a service. I think it's. Taxing through people, I think there should be more people on it maybe, or maybe some. Look for ways maybe to expand it. Bring in new people, um. I don't know, you know, the answer would be to dissolve it and then start a whole new one or add new people to it, so there's somebody they're used to it. One thing I think, um, that gets monotonous is when there's. Little changes now and then, instead of maybe have a goal. That. Once a year, once every other year, all these things are, I mean, there's a lot of things I think that need attention, but maybe that don't need attention today. Or tomorrow that. Are. Thrown together, basically, I, you know, I think here a couple of months ago, we had one where there was nine, I believe, things that were brought to attention. Um. That. It's done more. Once a year, once every other year, there's. Whether it's five changes or fifty changes, they're all done at once. Um, I think it'd make it easier on the folks to do it. They could be a lot more cost effective and time effective for everybody else involved. Do it, I don't think it takes much longer to do five at a time, cost wise, than it does to do, you know, one, five hundred times. Um, I would like to see. Um. It's like anything else, it's hard to get people to help do stuff, but. Try to get some other people involved in this somehow.
So how many people responded when we put out the ad for being on the Huguen County parks and. Uh, trail, through mission. Right, and they were three. Town board members.
They're already, and that's what happens, and that's, that's the sad thing is, there's so many people. So many positions, but it's the same, and it's every organization, it's not just the town.
Exactly.
Whether it's a church or fire department or a club, snowmobile club, rollerblader club.
Right.
There's five people. Or twelve people that do everything, and they're on all the committees. And I, I don't know what the answer is. Um, you know, I. My, my initial thought, I, I don't, I think it's a good thought, I don't think it would work. I think the town board needs to accept more responsibility than what we've done in the past for some of this stuff. And the town board should be taxed with, maybe initially saying, this is what, you know. If the commission came to us and said, we have these changes, we're looking at it, we're thinking about. What does the town board want us to go through with, and what does the town board think is a new point, um. Or, you know, charge the town board to set up, you know, if there's something that's an urgent thing to set up a committee that. If it's, you know, something to do with poll numbers, you get, you know. Couple of people from the planning board, you get a couple of people, you get the CEO, you get somebody that's familiar with carpentry. You have a four or five person group that, that's their task and their charge is to.
I would welcome other people to work with us. Um, I'd welcome a full board and we'll just make it an open meeting. And then do public notice and we go through the L U R. So you bring your L U R with you. We look at the articles, we look at what the potential issues might be based on, again. Planning board, zoning board of appeals. Code enforcement officer, highway superintendent, attorney, town board, probably town clerk. In other words. It's usually, it's an external. Entity that's saying, I see an issue with this. And I'm gonna defer to Rich Palmieri, Z B A chair, do you agree with that? That's. Because the Z B A has presented, um, probably it was done through Lisa Summers. Saying, will you have some, look into this? Um, planning board, same thing, uh, and Lisa Summers being the clerk. Writes it down and it's the planning board that might have made the recommendation. Um, but, again, I would welcome the town board to get more involved with it. And really have a good understanding of the land use regulations and the comprehensive plan, which is an important document. Um, so.
Yeah, so maybe more even, yeah.
Okay, here, uh, I'm trying.
On doing it, I mean, you do it, it's all reported, maybe every ten years.
Okay, we've got different issues going on here, okay? So the one issue is if we're making, let's say, eight amendments. To the land use regulation, and those are often just something that surfaces. It's not like the zoning commission, a group sits around and says, let's go page by page. It's usually something that has been discussed in a meeting setting, zoning board of appeals, planning board, et cetera. Said we really should look into that. Um, so it. What the issue seems to be, how often should we then take those amendments and embed them? Into the document, and the last time that was done was two thousand fourteen. And we have multiple amendments, changes that have been added. Maybe two thousand twenty-four, that's when the document is physically changed. And it becomes a new document, land use regulation, so to speak. If this makes sense to you. Right, right, and that does make sense. But to me, those are two different things going on. The one is a result of. Topics, issues that might come up among the different departments. And the other is, when are we going to take this whole document and say, this is one of the documents? And the last time again was two thousand fourteen, so maybe we look at every ten years. Two thousand twenty-four, let's take the, that document and, um, it'll be like. The L U R and not with a umpteen amendments, but a brand new document, at least it's not even had. So it sounds like that makes sense to her because she's the one that has to do the physical changes or delegates. Delegate that to have the changes made in the document itself. So, and what we do. With the planning board, zoning board, we're focusing on the content. We're not focusing on, now how, how are we gonna change this? Because if we put this in here, it changes pages. It might change the indications, the font, formatting, et cetera. So we don't, haven't typically gotten involved with that, but that seems to be the issue that Lisa feels, but is that right, Lisa?
Yes, and I looked into, uh, general code. Has a, uh. It's called codes three sixty. I got a little work from that company. I haven't had a chance to really digest it yet. Fairhaven has a, I think Conquest has a several other towns in the area have it. Um, I don't know if, I know you've got a concern about them, I wanna say like owning or.
Well, definitely pay for that service. If we're looking at saving dollars. Because, um, the zoning commission is a voluntary group. There's no payment to that. So the expense that goes along with the land use regulation amendments. The way we're doing it right now might fall upon the clerk's. Um, office, doing the changes, the mailings for the certified letters, et cetera. Um, but once you start contracting with an outside firm. Then they're in control and they can charge dollars. She's looking into how much those dollars are.
Can, can I? They can also, you can also, with their program. An attorney's office can search, I'm gonna say dumpsters. What about dumpsters? You can just dumpsters, it'll pop right up. Or it'll have the list of, here's the different sections. That way, I mean, I get. Law firms call me all the time. You know, are there any of this and that, or what's going on in your back? And it's like, here's the document. And of course, it's been PDF, they can't research it. And I don't have the time to sit down and take the time to explain. And I don't have the time to sit down and take the time to explain things to people. But there's so much more to it than just doing a search. You can print from it, there are certain sections you can print, I mean, there's just so much to it, but like I said, I haven't even looked at it.
Can I say something about E code three sixty?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, it, it, Fairhaven has the E code three sixty, and it's incredibly user-friendly. Just like what Lisa's saying, you know, you can, you can access it, you can pull up whatever section you want. There's any subsection of a subsection of a subsection, you can go right to it, you can pull the link, you can send it to someone. And also, when we have amendments that we want incorporated in our document. You just present them in the proper way to E code three sixty, they do all the formatting.
There's no table content, I mean, there might be, uh, fences.
Yeah, they change the whole thing.
They do everything.
There's no table of contents.
Right, you submit it in the proper way, and, and you don't, they do all of the reformatting. If, whether it's a small change or a big change.
So, it's a, it's. It's a company that does this. And like I said, I have a list of companies that, or towns and villages that use them. But, I know it is pricey. But it's, they have most of our, uh, local laws already. Actually, I sent them all our local laws, because they said anything beyond like two thousand and four. Anything earlier, send it to us.
Which we did a discount, that we do.
But there's, I don't know if there's any charge for them, if we have something with fences, you want to change fences? And we change it, I don't think, I don't know if there's a charge for that, I don't think so. But, you know, like I said, I haven't had a chance to give them a look at that.
Is this something the zoning commission would be willing to look at?
Absolutely, we want to have, right, and Lisa, Lisa Thummer. I would really respect her and put on that as well, because she works with other municipalities, so.
Hope you guys can get us for next month's meeting. Is there enough time between now and twenty twenty-four to re-rate the, redo the document? Yeah.
I would think so, I mean, it's, it's a living document. Now, now you're hearing my planning board training, when I look through training, and they would say, you're zoning this document. Your land use regulations, it's a living document, which means it's meant to reflect changes. If things didn't change, we wouldn't need to change the L U R, let's put it that way, but change is inevitable, so.
But once a year, or once every couple of years, would be better than doing it every couple of months.
Yeah. And I, I, and I don't, anybody can brainstorm and get any ideas on.
If something does come up? Like the overlay.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
So that, you got it, you want to get that, I get that, but I'm saying these, change a word from one word to two words.
So any ideas anybody has for getting new blood and?
I think that we really start, I like, I know we're putting stuff in the paper, and a lot of people in this room read the paper, but. Not everybody reads the paper, I mean, we need to really start looking at. And I don't have a fully formed thought process on it, whether or not the town of Sterling is going to have a. Non-commentable, like, Facebook page, Instagram page, we need to start interacting with how people interact. Not everybody reads the paper.
Uh, yes, Facebooker.
True, but.
I'm velvet as I'm, they, I was.
But I don't know how, I mean, that's something else we should probably move on.
And, and I, I don't know what the requirements for the town to be able to have a page. Or a real association town.
Yeah, I know.
Would you like to investigate that?
Absolutely, but I think that that is one way, but, I mean, you're not going to get twenty-five-year-old that you want to come. You, you have three people who, who did the, you were telling me because they knew about it, no one read it.
They're called the town of Marcellus.
They do that?
They have a Facebook page, so they'll tell you about it.
Okay.
We're not getting swans, little. We're not getting swans, little.
Maybe very well, because she did a, Oprah on a Facebook page, she did.
Can I just, we need them, we need them.
Yeah. You can do it where it's just like, you just poster, nobody.
Yeah, you can, yeah, change the settings, I know, comments, anything, and it's just like an information post.
New business. Clean-up day. Want to do that again? In last year's September. They've got highway guys here, they've got a guy in the road to Saturday morning for. I can ask them four or five hours to do cleanup day.
What's a new guy?
I know, the new guy. I know last year, the guy's got a lot of cool stuff. Be surprised at the stuff people throw away. September. With the weekend after Labor Day, the ninth. For you, Kyle? The second? Second's Labor Day weekend, yeah. Is Labor Day, Labor Day should be.
Labor Day, fourth, Labor Day, fourth, yeah.
September ninth, does that work?
I think it's full, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll try to do the, again.
I know, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking about families, cleaning out their houses and stuff like that.
So what do you better do after they went to school, are you thinking, or?
I mean, everybody does one last round on Labor Day, so probably.
That's what we'd done before, was after Labor Day, figuring that, all the lawn furniture and.
All the stuff you don't store.
That, 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 that get thrown in the fire, they can bring over here, and they're cleaning their camps up, you know.
Yeah.
People are cleaning up for the winter. September ninth?
Sounds good.
Um, and I'll, I'll reach out to the village again as well, and they, they sent a couple guys over last year to call. One of them took home more stuff, got his little trailer that he put in the dumpster. Probably the sure, he'll bring it all back with him.
Yeah.
Okay, shoot first, September ninth.
The last one.
We did eight to noon, or eight to two or something? Eight to two? Yeah, we'll do eight to two. Saturday, September ninth. Now, uh, I'll contact. You know, or what we use last year, I recall. Okay, um, speed reduction for New Street was granted. Uh, we, did you put signs up yet or?
The sign, we was dragging the feet, I got other signs ordered too, for that, that, uh. That's area acres or whatever, yeah, they're behind, but, they'll get them.
So we don't need to do anything else? Any other new business?
Oh, yeah, and it may not be something we discuss now, but we know you can start thinking about scheduling. Yeah, yeah, just saying.
I will just update to mine by the next meeting. Since, next meeting will be August.
Correct.
Okay. Can I get a motion for resolution to pay the audited vouchers?
I'll make that motion. Karen, yeah, please, Charlie, Joan, yes, Scott.
Yes. Need a motion for. Okay. Can I get a motion to schedule cleanup day for September ninth, from eight to two, and authorize the town clerk to advertise?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Karen, yes, please, Charlie, Joan, yes, Scott.
Yes. Can I get a motion to sign, uh, Hube County Water Sewer Authority Agreement? For Water District number three. And also approval to sign the same document, except for Water District number two. When it is presented, so we can forward that to, to wait with. The correction of, on the first page, where it speaks to authorities, employees. And should be added.
Because on the page that I referenced, that is for.
Yeah.
So on page.
Requested assistance in supervising and management of operations and maintenance and repairs. Owe to our water district by the use of the authorities and employees. Or Sawyers Associates.
Well, that's what it is on page three, halfway down the undersea, I just.
To keep it consistent.
It's just a thought, maybe it's being a little petty.
That's going to change to four.
Was there another change? I feel like there was.
Yes, there were, the date.
Oh, yeah, we changed the date and make it effective, August one, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, now we're moving on.
I'll make that one here.
One second. Karen, yeah, please, Charlie, Joan, yes, Scott.
Yes.
We got this today.
Okay, can I get a motion for resolution to authorize a supervisor to sign the Williamson Lawbook Support Contract? For our county and budget programs.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Karen, yeah, please, Charlie, Joan, yes, Scott.
Yes. From the floor, anybody?
Uh, got an email from Pat, she says the, uh, next, uh, Sterling Historical Society meeting, the next Tuesday. And Michael Brewster will be speaking about the military trip, that was all the scrap in, in the.
Anybody else? Thank you everyone for your vote of confidence.
Scott, I'll get you out of here.
Okay, thank you for coming up.